Please, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the being blessed. Father, we pray today for peace. Most of all, be pleased.
Please stand before the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public for which it is nation, God, indivisible, justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the March 29th in your packet. They meet with your approval or accept a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
Questions? All favor raised your right hand. Carries. Johnson, are we set on our agenda? Any change?
No, no changes to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
Right in the presentation, there was a question whether Mrs. Ellison was going to be here. Karen Bush Ellison, did you?
I don't believe she's here, Mr. Chairman.
Joe, you want to speak on an item that's down, I guess, the fifth item on our debate agenda. I'll just let you speak when we get to that. You just want to welcome everyone here to the... Yes, these are recorded and they'll be on the web. When? How long? Two days. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. These items have been through the committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all.
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All favor raised your right hand. Carries. On to business, first item. Commissioner Skinner, you've got the first one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. File RZ 220304. I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for a gym for property located at Tax map 061, parcel 085D, subject to the conditions enumerated in the March 31st, 2022 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes, this is a request for conditional use for a gym in the Grove Town area. You see this here off William Few Parkway. We've been through the workup with them. I think one of the interesting things about this, there are conditions associated with this, but one of the conditions is this actual egress here that you have at that intersection. As some of you may remember, and this was occupied by Uniparts, there was a big issue about not being able to really access that property from that particular intersection. But the applicant understands that they're going to have to make significant intersection improvements to make this project work, and one of which is going to be they're actually going to have to remove part of that building that's there, maybe that entire building there, to be able to make their thing work. So it really is probably a good use for this facility, and it's also going to drastically improve the intersection. One thing I will bring to your attention, if you notice this piece of intersection here, you'll see that there's a left turn and then the straight goes through in the right lane and then a right turn due to the number of cars that are making the right turn. That's actually going to be swapped. That right turn will be right turn only, and then that in the left lane there, that'll be your left turn lane or your straight lane, which actually lines up with the new driveway.
Questions? All favor raised your right hand. Motion carries. Jason, did you want to speak? Put your name on this.
Okay, next item, file RZ 2203-11.
Hold on one second. I got to help myself ahead of myself last time. Can you talk us through this? I know Matt's not here, so you're filling in for him?
Yes.
Before we go down the path, just to describe what it is?
Sure, yes, I'd be glad to. So this is a request to reduce the side setbacks on these two lots that you see here. They're asking to reduce the side setbacks to six feet on each side. This has to do with the fact that there's a utility easement that runs down the middle, that is a 35-foot utility easement, and what they really want to do is to reduce the side setbacks so they can build houses that are similar character of the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. If they stick with the 10-foot setback, it's my understanding they're going to have to reduce the footprint of the house, which would be inconsistent with the other houses that are within that road.
Questions, Scott?
Chair, I make a motion to deny the request for a major revision to the PUD and a change of conditions for tax map 067, parcels 2413 and 2414, in order to reduce the side building setback for these parcels.
Second.
Any questions? All favor raised your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, file RZ 220312. Make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at tax map 062, parcel 2659, of a veterinary clinic with an outdoor exercise area, subject to the condition enumerated in the March 31st, 2022 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is for a proposed veterinary clinic. You can see on the screen there, there is a proposed fence, and you see the 20-foot setbacks, but there is actually a 30-foot structural buffer that's going to require on the rear lot. I believe the applicant has agreed to that 30-foot structural buffer there, and that's really because of its dissimilar zonings.
I do have a question. This is just for out walking the dogs. They will not be housed or they will not stay in cages?
Outside.
Outside.
Not to my knowledge, Scott. They didn't have any outside storage for animals, did they?
No, this is just for outdoor runs, exercise for rehabilitation of that.
Right, okay, okay. Questions? All favor raised your right hand. Motion carries.
Next, Mr. Chair.
I keep getting ahead of myself, sorry. Tell us about the next one.
Yes, sir, this is a change of conditions for Trade Center Drive. This is actually one that was approved several years ago where you had a situation where apartments were approved on the first level. The applicant has come back in based on ADA needs and is asking now to have a handicap-accessible apartment on the lower level. Your original conditions did not allow for that apartment on the lower level, so they're asking for that additional apartment to be added.
Questions?
Request is to change the... One of the upstairs apartments to a use that's similar to downstairs now, is that correct? And just kind of flip the... Help me through that.
Yeah, so I think what originally happened was the applicant was, I think, very pleased to get 14 units in this particular thing from the commission at the time and thought adding an additional apartment would be difficult, but after working with staff and talking to the applicant, staff felt like it was not a good idea to put one retail unit on the second floor and have that one apartment on the lower floor. So staff recommendation was either that you would either deny the request and keep them the way they are. If you were inclined to add an apartment, that you would add one to the lower floor and not make them put that one piece of retail or professional upstairs. We did reach out to the applicant. The applicant is good with that, if the commission is so inclined to do that.
And if we deny this, he can still have those same apartments that we have already approved. He would just have to have the expense of putting an elevator?
That is correct.
For said apartment, is that correct? We're not denying him having those apartments.
That is correct. He'd have to be ADA accessible, which would require an elevator.
And why is he now coming back asking for this because he did not want the cost of the elevator?
Now, I don't know. There's applicants, I don't think the applicant's here, anybody representing this project here?
I can't answer that, Commissioner Malir. I don't know why they made the request.
Planting back there? So for ADA purposes? Still trying to understand why you wouldn't still have to have the elevator, although you still have 14 apartments upstairs.
You only have to have one apartment, 15 or below. Correct me if I'm wrong, you only need five percent. So that's one, so he's got to have one apartment designated as an ADA compliant.
The rest of them will not get an elevator. They don't, won't require one, he will not have to put the elevator in.
Does anybody know how many units are downstairs? Not apartments, but office or detail or that been stated? I don't know that I...
There's a good many. I don't know if we could see it on this printout. It may be difficult to see how many units. Scott, do you remember how many units that was?
I don't remember off the top of my head, and that would also be dependent on whether or not a particular use was going to take more than one of those suites, so it could be a fluctuating number anyways, but there was a good number of units that were available,
Keith, can you address the safety aspect? Because I was reading last night and I come to the fire and the possibility of fire deal and whatever, can you just kind of give us a... Or whatever on that and how y'all from a... I think that would probably be the most likely, if there's such a thing as likely, issue to happen, you know, from a safety issue.
So during a fire, you would not want... During a fire, you would not want to use the elevator? They could stairwell, counter anyone, not able to down the stairs. So whether they're on the second floor, we're still going to have to run their residence. Elevator, as far as a rescue, not in play. Obviously, on the ground floor, we can just go.
So we're all stairwells, second floor on public units like this? Fire safety, contained in whatever?
Yeah, so they're a higher fire rating.
But an elevator would satisfy the ADA requirement.
Who couldn't use it? Case of a fire? Correct.
That's correct.
Questions?
Gentlemen, these apartments were approved against the will of the people in District One who are very much against apartments. I know you've heard about them as much as I have when we have approved apartments in this district. The agreement when these apartments were approved was that there would be none on the ground floor. That was the agreement. We all agreed to that. We discussed it at length. Everybody agreed to that, and the mere existence of these units is so unsavory to my constituents, and to continue to give concession after concession to this developer is kind of like rubbing salt in a wound to the people that I have to hear from over and over who do not like apartments and did not want them. And as I represent the voters in District One, I'm asking you to please consider with me to deny this application. I don't believe it's about the safety as much as it is him being able to save the money on the elevator, and every one of us have people in our district who look at us and say, hey, these developers, they ask for an inch and you give them a mile. And we have to look at these people and answer that, and I know I have to, and I have people looking at me who are going to say, hey, why'd you do that? You just keep giving and giving, and eventually, we're going to have to put our foot down. I encourage you to not approve this.
Got a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at tax map 078, parcel 1161, to allow 15 apartments. One of the apartments shall be permitted to be located on the ground floor.
Sounds like it's going to die from a lack of second.
I guess I could amend my motion, change my motion.
Oh, you wait a minute, so that's dead, so you'd make a new motion? If you wanted to make a new motion, if you didn't, there's no action taken on the item. So it stays exactly...
Part of it just dies.
Stays exactly the way it is now if you don't make another motion. Is that right, Chris?
That's close, stays.
That's correct. So if your motion died, so anybody wants to make another motion, they can, but if you don't, then there'll be no action on this item.
Next item, Joe, I believe you wanted to speak. Please state your name and address to the record.
Joe Galena, I'm Vice President, Land Development Homes, 7009 Evans Town Center Boulevard. Our architect.
I can't hardly...
Big hit of the mic for us, please.
Laura Shellato, my address is 4458 Shadowwood Drive.
Raise that mic up.
How's that? I know you can hear me, maybe not her. Laura's did a lot of the design work on this, so that's why she's... What we're asking for, if you're a little background on this, I'll try to go quickly, is we brought this project from Glomer, which has passed away, so we brought the land and the engineering and the project lock, stock, and barrel. You guys approved it for Mr... We were requesting to go reduce the side setbacks, I mean, the setbacks, 15-foot on the front, five on the side, five on the rear. We worked with the planning staff, and they recommended 15 in the front. Side setbacks would be six-foot for the street-facing lots and stay at 7.5 for all the alley-facing lots, and then five in the rear, and we're okay with that. Now, the setback revision would apply to only 122 of the 160 lots that are there. We're not asking to increase the density. I'm not asking for more lots. I'm not asking for more homes. I'm not asking for reductions in any kind of common space. All we're doing is trying to reduce the setbacks, and one of the reasons that we want to do that is if you look at the plans, a lot of these are side, I guess they call them side slide driveways, where they come from the front and they slide to the back. At the present setbacks that are approved, that'll only give you about 16 feet backing out of your garage. If you backed out of a side entry garage, 16 feet's not much. Reducing the side setbacks will allow for about 20 feet, makes it a bit easier. What we think will happen is people have a tendency then to use their garage and park their cars in the garage as opposed to two or three parked on a long driveway going down. We also feel that this is going to create a more friendlier, a more social, and a more neighborly feel to this neighborhood. When you reduce the front, have your houses closer to the front with the sidewalk, people have a tendency to talk as you're sitting on your porch as opposed to far away, and as you're walking, you may interact with your neighbors. So that's one of the other things with this side setback. We also think that it's going to create more diversity in the neighborhood, allow for different designs. We've looked at different ways, look at some of the drawings on here. Laura's come up with different types of looks to these elevations and also within the house itself. When you have a little bit more room, you can add some flex rooms, power pantries, they're called. I don't know exactly what a power pantry is. You can add it, and we just think that it's going to create a more diverse-looking neighborhood as opposed to the same box, 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 because you're limited by what you can do. We think that this is going to create a neighborhood that both we, as a developer and the builder, and as the county feels very proud of. You have U-side setbacks in other neighborhoods, north, is that Northridge and Mitchell Park? We also do five-foot side setbacks, Lari, which is right next to, right next to Misty Meadows. So we're asking, and hopefully you can look favorably on this, we really believe that this is a project that will work for the county and for us. I'll answer any questions you want to present.
So this is no more lots?
No more lots, no more density, no more...
Then why reduce the side setbacks? If it's no more lots, why reduce the side setbacks?
It'll give you, well, like I said, it'll give you a little bit more room to run your driveways down, a little bit more room in getting your car in and out of your garage. You've got 16 feet.
Driveway going into the setback, not the house.
No, the house is not going to go into setback. We're reducing the setback. You're taking 7.5, we're accepting what the staff says, six feet, so we're gaining a foot and a half on one side, a foot and a half on the other. And what you do is, because you have 15, we're able to shift the house over, not into the setback, but a little closer to the property line, give us a little bit more room on that driveway, so as you go down it, you can make your turn into your garage. If you have a big Palisade SUV like my wife does, 25 feet's not enough for her to get out of the garage.
Careful, anything you say will be recorded and she can watch it.
That's all right. She already knows I've yelled at her a couple times with that, but I mean, the parking spaces out there are 18 feet. I mean, backing out into another one, so this will make it a little bit easier. You want to avoid having people parking on their driveways, that it looks like, you know, most people have two, possibly even three or four cars. If you can get two into the garage, it makes it a little better look as you're driving down the street. Again, having the houses a little closer to the street, more of a neighborhood feel. I hate to always bring it up, but where I grew up, that's what it felt like. People stop and they talk to you because you're sitting on your porch and you're as close to the bar, Commissioner. So makes better interaction than what we'll have here. You've got 20, I think it's 25 feet front setback. That house is sitting way back off the road, and then you have sidewalks, nobody's going to stop. They'll stop at your fence and talk to you. Just trying to, like I said, we're not trying to get more houses, not trying to get more dens... We're just trying to make a better neighborhood, which we know we can do.
Don't get this approved? Will you be reworking everything to make those driveways that way anyway, to make those improvements?
I don't know if you possibly can. Laura's drawn a few up, and you can see we've got it as close to the property line as mine. Got to take into consideration stormwater, this will help with stormwater. I can create valleys down the driveway like that. I've also used yard drains, project in Aitken County, where we're actually draining.
So on the other side, where the driveway is not located, how close is the house to the property line?
Which, are you looking at the...
Any house.
Looking at?
Yeah.
How close it'd be?
It's six foot?
Right now, it's seven and a half feet.
But you're asking for six?
I could be able to push the house to six.
The house be wider?
It could be, but it could not be. It just gives us a little bit more flexibility in what we design. You're limiting that seven foot five, seven foot six on both sides. You've only got so much space to work with. Now you open it up a little bit, we can be a little bit more creative. Instead of having a simple front porch, I can wrap a porch around it. More of a, I think we have one that shows you that. A lot of different things to make a better...
Joe, I think you said you weren't trying to add any lots, and I completely understand that, but to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish now, if you don't get this, then you would have to reduce your lots, correct? If you wanted to build, if you want to build the same house that you want to build here...
I'd have to, I'd have to take a lot or two.
You'd take a couple of lots out, right.
And we're not looking to do that. We'll work within, if you deny it, we'll work with what we have. If I, I've got to be honest with you, if I was presenting this in the very beginning instead of Sootie, I would have probably tried to get this front and showed you that. Though we're kind of coming in the back door a little bit on this. But like I said, I've seen it work. Lari, it's working in Northridge. Little something different. I think it's a really good thing that the county would enjoy. Have any other questions?
But it increases the lot size, looking at some of these 500, 500 feet, 500 square feet?
Lot size, no, it's about five thousand, over five thousand.
House size.
House size? Could run anywhere from 2,100 to 2,700. All of these houses either face, have a backyard that faces green space or a front yard that faces green space, so you'll have a lot of openness to this neighborhood.
Now, have you ever lived in a house that's six feet, like six, like 12 feet from the person next to you? It is not, not utopia. I mean, you can smell what they're cooking for dinner, and then it stays wet between the houses?
But it also, I knew who my neighbors were.
Whether you like them or not.
Because it was your roommate.
Pretty much. It's what I grew up in. I grew, I grew. Everybody lives on the block. One thing I've found here is a lot. Right out, and that's fine.
Making them a foot and a half closer is not going to make them be friendlier. Making them a foot and a half closer to each other is not going to make them be friendlier or...
Not that way, but up in the front and the back. You have it, you have a... I know, I've seen it. I've got that look. I never could win.
You have other questions? Thanks, Joe.
Well, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Is there a motion in our...
This chair. File RZ 220314. I make a motion to disapprove the request for a major PRD revision for property located at tax map 050, parcel 010, to revise the building setbacks.
Second. You have a discussion? All favor raised your right hand. Motion carries. That's one more.
Ready for me to make a...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This is file VA 220305. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 90-53, list of lot and structural requirements, property located at tax map 0018, parcel 148, to reduce building setbacks for existing structures subject to the conditions enumerated in the March 31st, 2022 Planning Commission Report.
Second. How about now?
Yep, so this is just a situation where you have a homeowner who had several sheds and carports and buildings on the property. They were right up against the property line, so a lot of it, I think the ones that are in question have been removed already, and they're just asking for the variance to allow, I guess, the ones that are still there to be able to remain. Is that correct, Scott?
Anything changes, they will have to come in.
That is correct. That's correct.
And your motion was?
To approve it.
To approve it.
Prove to let them...
Yeah.
Scott, was everybody at peace here now with this? I remember a lot of controversy.
Not entirely at peace, but as Johnson indicated, the primary purpose for this request was a shed and a carport that are, have since been removed and are reflected in that and are highlighted as shown there. You can see the previous picture where the carport and the shed behind it were still a part of the original application at that time. What this will do will allow the existing structures that are to remain to be identified as, allowed to stay in place, be replaced if they are so desired to, but in the future, any additional structures or any additional improvements would have to meet the R4 standards for this area.
So they could replace anything that's there in the same footprint?
That's correct. Or they, or if not, then they would have to meet the R4 standards if they chose to do that.
Can't be a new one.
Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries? Any legal matters?
Illegal matters.
Request for review by committee?
Public comment?
Now, we have executive possession items, which we should be able to deal with right here and now. Vice Chairman Richardson, I believe they're yours.
I make a motion to approve $7,200 to Aaron Borinson, tax parcel number 065009B, to obtain right-of-way and/or easement, party of McManus Road. right-of-way and/or easement for the McManus Road widening project.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve $5,100 to Grace Baptist Church, tax parcel 65009C, right-of-way and/or easement for the McManus widening project.
Second.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve $195,800 to Spirit Master Funding, tax parcel number 04001D to obtain right-of-way and/or easement for the Horizon South Parkway Road.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve $9,700 to Brian Newman, tax parcel number 065009A, right-of-way and/or easement for the McManus widening project.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries?
129 remaining. 129.
Here we go.
I'm sure you probably noticed that part of that was non-reimbursable. You saw that some of that was non-reimbursable, just so the board knows that we're using MPO money to start that project, do this property acquisition. We have a 20% match. I'm sure y'all saw that.
Well, only one other motion needs to be made.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're out of here.
We're good.